Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is now seven o'clock P. M., and we are called to order. Our invocation today is going to be led by Elder David Cisneros from Transformation Church, and then we'll have our pledges of allegiance done. Ashley, will you mind doing our American pledge, please? And Richard, you know, you got the Texas. Come on, man.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, which art in heaven, Lord, we give you the glory, Lord, for blessing us and being with us. We pray, Lord, for this meeting, Lord, that you touch the hearts of those that are here, Lord, watch over them and protect them, Lord. We pray for blessings towards our neighbors, Lord, that are throughout this whole city. In the name of Jesus, Heavenly Father, we pray that your will be done. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Very good. Now, we've got a presentation from our Parks and Recs. Going to give our departmental update. Hello, Dan.
Hello, Mayor. Counsel? Okay, a little bit about what's going on with us. Okay, let me make sure I know what I'm doing here.
All right.
Yeah. Oh, I gotta turn it on.
Knew we should have had the show.
Hold on. There we go.
No more money.
There it is. Wow. I'm gonna probably, uh, no more money, right after the budget. Yes, sir. All right. Okay, Parks and Recs. So I'm going to start off with a quote from the N R. P. A., National Recreation Park Association. They published a paper about why parks are essential, uh, public services. Uh, if I have, do I have any park board members or senior board members? Okay, I do not. That's okay. I just wanted to make sure I recognize them. Uh, okay. There are no communities that pride themselves on their quality of life, promote themselves as a desirable location for businesses to relocate or maintain that they are environmental stewards of their natural resources without such communities having a robust, active system of parks and recreation programs for public use and enjoyment. All right, your Parks and Rec Department, we've got seventeen full-time folks, eight part-time, a host of seasonal and, and other, I'll say, part-time positions, uh, now that we have the rec center. Five divisions in the department, administrative, recreation, facility maintenance, park maintenance, and then our senior center for adults fifty-plus. Uh-oh. What happened? There we go. All right. All right. All right. Recreation Center. All right. So as y'all may know, the Recreation Center opened to the public May of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we currently have one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven memberships, which is a thirty-seven percent increase from this same time last year. Uh, we have, on average, about six thousand five hundred and eighty-eight monthly admissions. We have approximately, on average, one thousand five hundred, one thousand one hundred and fifty-one average monthly admissions to our kids' club. Your Recreation Division offers about nine hundred, on, on average, offers about nine hundred and eight activities. We registered just over four thousand people. This year, we offered one thousand fifty-nine activities and registered almost forty-two hundred people. And our utilization percentage is fifty-four percent, which means that, um, um, meaning we fill almost six out of every ten available spots. And you'll see some pictures there of our, our various programs, Daddy Daughter Dance, uh, being there, and, uh, some other things that we do. So moving on to our senior center, which is under Recreation Services, and y'all may know this already, but I'll mention it. Nineteen ninety-seven, we had final renovations were complete, which joined two vacant buildings, a former police station and library, which is now your, your senior center. Uh, that's a, it's a ten thousand square foot building, and it was dedicated for the primary purpose, uh, to serve adults ages fifty, fifty and over in the Alvin area. On average, your senior, senior center division offers about seventy activities, registering one thousand three hundred and seventy-three percent participants on average per year. This year, at the senior center, we offered one hundred and eight activities and registered almost three thousand participants, having a utilization percentage of sixty-three percent. Again, meaning that we're filling over six out of every ten available spots. Uh, the center hosts monthly meetings for numerous organizations, like, uh, retired teachers, and parties, family reunions, wedding receptions, other private events. And as y'all may know, we have a twenty-two passenger bus, and we took nine hundred and thirteen people on fifty-eight different trips this year so far. Thank you for that. All right. So now our community-wide events. These are things that we don't charge for. They're free to attend, and those are hosted throughout the year. Movie night in the park, trick-or-treat trail, home for the holidays, Nerf nights, the fireworks is a big one. Uh, these are all no cost, and we have, again, best guests taking headcounts at these things. We have ju, almost ten thousand people, uh, this year, which is about average, uh, average for us. All right. I want to talk about partnerships. We can't do what we do without great partnerships. And so you'll see on the, on the presentation, several organizations, but I, I want to read some more. Uh, in addition to these, we have the actions program of Buzoria County, and you'll see up there Little League, uh, girls softball, A I. S. D., uh, Spartans rugby, um, our own internal departments, uh, help us out. So again, we do it, wouldn't have the reach that we have, that we do, and wouldn't have the impact we have, um, without our partnerships. All right. We'll talk about administrative services. Uh, we oversee a community service worker program, court-ordered community service, as well as volunteer. I'm going to talk about the court-ordered community service. We logged, I say we, we've received, uh, around four hundred hours of court-ordered community service. Now, that's a decrease of about twenty-eight percent from last year. Uh, we track, verify, and report those hours to the respective court. We oversee fourteen different service contracts, value about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is janitorial, manicured mowing, H. Vac, pest control, uh, generators, that type of thing. Um, we're responsible for customer service, work order management, registrations. Uh, we process the event applications and street closure requests. We reserve our parks, uh, our amenities. We bill and collect for those services. We're also part of the emergency management planning and preparation. Um, we also forecast our park and our building capital improvements. Our budget's just about four point one million dollars. Facility maintenance services, I think I covered that. Park services, oh, I didn't do that. Responsible for building maintenance, seventeen city buildings, um, the city-owned buildings, twenty-two emergency generators, the Babo and Pool, the Pool with the rec center, all the playground equipment and structures in our park system. We have approximately two hundred and eighty thousand square feet of, of buildings. Uh, on average, we receive about twelve hundred work requests per year. Um, this year to date, we're right on average at one thousand one hundred and ninety-six as of this afternoon. Park maintenance, we oversee the grounds of approximately a hundred and seventy acres of manicured parkland, green space, and the Oak Park Cemetery. We maintain the flowerbed. We're, we're responsible for maintaining the flower beds, athletic playing fields, playgrounds, and many of the amenities throughout the park system. And I want to say that as of this week, we installed new foul poles at Morgan Park. That was quite the process. If you remember, we're still working through the same process with T. C. Q. for a restroom storage building. So this was quite the process. It, it took not as long for the, for, for that, but we had them installed, and our people did it, uh, in-house, again, to save money. And it was a fifteen thousand dollar grant that we got through the Community Development Block Grant. Um, and then the process was overseen by Terricon, our environmental consultants, to make sure we were in compliance, and they do all the reporting for us. So, so with that, we're really excited and really happy that we get to serve our, our community, and we appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Dan?
Great job. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We have no public comment. Councilman Garvey, uh, would you like to remove anything from consent agenda?
No, Mayor. No, Mayor. Couldn't get it out. No, sir.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
Then we'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'm moved to approve, to approve the consent agenda as published.
Please vote.
Motion approved unanimously. Items approved on the consent agenda are the minutes from September fourth city council meeting. Item B, resolution twenty-five R. Twenty-two, accepting a fifteen thousand dollar donation from the Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation to the City of Alvin Police, Fire, and EMS Departments. Item C, and in our local agreement between the City of Alvin and the City of Hillcrest Village for the provision of fire protection and emergency medical services for a term beginning October first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, and authorizes city manager to sign the agreement. Item D, ordinance twenty-five Y, amending chapter seventeen and a half signs of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alvin, Texas, for the purpose of amending chapter seventeen and a half dash two, definitions, amending section seventeen and a half dash five, exceptions and exemptions, and amending section seventeen and a half dash eighteen, fees to provide a permit process for temporary signs for garage sales, providing for publication, providing for severability, and setting forth other provisions related thereto. Item E, resolution twenty-five R. Twenty-four, amending the City of Alvin Personnel Policy Manual and providing for other matters related thereto. And item F, resolution twenty-five R. Twenty-three, adopting the City of Alvin Investment Policy for the investment of municipal funds and setting forth other matters related thereto. Mayor?
Thank you, Dixie. Uh, moving on to other business. Item A, consider request from the owner of the filling station located at six oh three West Sealy Street for a variance from the location restrictions in section three nineteen of the Alvin Code of Ordinances related to the sale of alcoholic beverages.
So Mayor and Council, you have this request before you. Um, Mr. Corey Scopel sent in a, a letter to request a hearing before you. He's requesting, uh, for his business, the filling station at six oh three West Sealy. Um, and the reason he is asking for this variance, he, um, is asking, he is trying to get a permit through, um, the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission for a, um, food and beverage certificate with a mixed beverage, so, um, so he can sell mixed beverages. And so everything is fine except for our ordinance, section three dash nineteen, there are some issues with the residency requirements. Um, it does not, uh, residence, uh, is not an exception within the ordinance, so it requires a variance. There are five different addresses that are within the three hundred foot, um, location of his business. I will tell you that in two thousand twenty-four, council, um, granted three nineteen Wes Willis, which is the chameleon. Um, they did authorize that, um, she went, she was getting a B. E., a beer license for her. Um, she's sold no beer. I mean, so, no food, but she did, uh, council did grant her that. So Mr. Scopel is here this evening if you should have any further questions.
Is currently B. Y. O. B., correct?
Is it B. Y. O. B.?
Current.
Okay, you can come on up here. Okay.
Should I, if I stay here?
He's got chills.
No problem. No problem.
All right, so I'm Corey Scopel with Corey's Kitchen at the filling station. Uh, as y'all know, we are a very family-friendly, family-oriented place, and that's what we wanted to bring to Alvin. Um, but currently, we're B. Y. O. B. Our biggest complaint from our guest has been that they can't enjoy a beer or cocktail with their launcher.
Can't they bring it with them, Corey?
I'm sorry?
Can't they bring that with them?
Yeah.
So I'm an adamant no on this, because you're, you knew where you were putting that restaurant, when you got that restaurant, and it's that it sits next to five different residences. And if we start letting one person get down this slope, then we're gonna have to let other people do it, just like we did with Vicki, just like we're doing now. Vicki no longer owns hers anymore, but they still got the license over there and everything. Or she at least no longer works there. So I'm a hundred percent no with it being so close to people. And there, we, I thought we'd already fixed this last time when we did Vicki's, that we, this was one of the places we were changing so they could get their B. Y. O. B. stuff. It was just Vicki's.
We don't have any say-so over B. Y. O. B.
Yeah.
Corey, you're not gonna change your hours, right? You're not gonna change your hours. You're just...
The lines will be open as eleven o'clock.
On what days?
On, more likely, like Wednesday through Saturday.
Yeah.
Um, and as I said, we're not, we're not trying to do more. We're just trying to offer, um, we're trying to offer that accommodation to our people. Uh, right now, we can be in B. Y. O. B. You don't get taxes on, on the alcohol. And more importantly, we can't really regulate it. So if Joe wants to come in with a case of beer and get slammed, there's not a whole lot of people who can do it. And if we are serving it, we can, we can keep a window on how much things are... If we are serving it, we can, we can keep it around or how much we can serve.
So you can't tell somebody to leave if they've had too much?
You won't get out of the heat and then drive across the block.
Well, you can also call the, the police officer forum or call a Uber forum. I believe Uber will do that for free.
I can count on one hand how many people want to buy commercial property in Alvin and continue to reinvest for Alvin. Locals like yourself that continue to reinvest in our town, continue to hire local people, I greatly appreciate, you know? I totally understand the concerns for alcohol use in general, no doubt. We've, we've had to pull out the jaws on the truck many times because of DWIs and other issues from a fire department standpoint. So I completely respect that, your stance on that, Councilman Vaughn. I, though, think that we're having to discuss this because of the forefathers that couldn't get zoning solved, you know, because a lot, in a lot of ways, that could have been solved. And I hope that it's something that we can all solve together in the next year. But, you know, I'm a fan because ultimately I want to support somebody that invests in our community and wants to continue providing better offering to their customers. We get asked about it all the time at the skating rink. It's just something I'm just too busy to worry about. People ask all the time because they want a beer, they want that, and that extra sales tax goes a long way, so I'm a fan of it.
Have any of the homeowners complained?
No. Have they been asked?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I've heard of.
Yeah, they have to have a sign.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm a yes, too. I think it's, I think it's, the, the footage deal, I've always felt is an arbitrary measure. I think in that downtown district, you're going to have, if you want to bring, you know, people coming to downtown, you're going to have to offer what the other restaurants offer and it's just part of doing business. And if people are currently drinking, I feel like there's no risk then either.
Well, all the other restaurants have gotten, have put their restaurants where they're not next door to residences.
I disagree. I think they would just happen to be there. They didn't put the restaurant there, they bought what was available, but...
Right.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's built, bought and built a new restaurant in this, within these measurements since I've been on council. And I, for one, Cory, I second what Scott says. You re, you reinvest into our community, you've always been a huge supporter of Little League, everything that goes on. It's all right, man, she's a kid. So, and I personally have seen you at your other businesses take charge and when somebody gets out of hand, you keep an eye on that and your managers keep an eye on it. You do a very good job. As a matter of fact, my daughter was there for the, for the Canelo fight. And she said you had, either you or one of your managers had to escort somebody out because they came in using foul language and they showed up intoxicated and removed them. So I know you take pride in your businesses. I know you're, you're homegrown and I appreciate what you can do when you invest into our community. I'm a yes for that as far as, because like you said, sales tax and piggybacking off of our budget that we just had to figure out in our tax rate, we just had to figure out. That's going to put a small dent in it, so. But like you said, somebody can show up with the 12-pack or a 24-pack and get slammed and once they get up, then you realize they're, they're intoxicated, you can't regulate what they're, what they're consuming. So yes, he can call a new reform. Yes, he can call Alvin PD, but it's also better for him to monitor what's being purchased and what's being consumed so it doesn't get to that point. Because at the end of the day, he calls an Uber and Joe Bloge over there gets an Uber home, gets in his second vehicle and goes to another bar, go get hammered some more, he has to wreck, hurt somebody else. So I, I'm for that, to be able to regulate it and also to maintain the sales tax as
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I move to approve the request from the owner of the filling station located at 603 West Sealy Street for a variance from the, from the location restrictions in Section 3-19 of the Alvin Code of Ordinances relating to the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Vaughn voting no.
Thank you. Item B, consider Ordinance 25Z, amending Chapter 26, records of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alvin, Texas, providing for severability, providing for a penalty, providing for publication, providing for an effective date, and setting for other matters related thereto. Chief?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Standing beside me is Corporal Clear. He, at the time we started renewing this ordinance or reviewing this ordinance, was in charge of permitting of the records and inspections of the records. And he played a big part in rewriting this. He researched at least eight cities around us for what they were doing so that we could determine what the best course of action was moving forward. A couple of months ago, several of the current wrecker owner, company owners met with our city manager and complained that there was too many wreckers on the rotation list. They had done that, or they had, had that meeting just after we added three, I think, to our current list. And when Mr. Rollin contacted me, I wasn't aware that it had grown over 10 on the list until that point in time. So we started looking and found that other cities do restrict the number of wreckers. Our ordinance does not have a restriction on that number and with any list you have to take care of or keep up with, the fact that there's no limiting authority in there, that list could grow to be out of control. As it is now, our dispatchers have to juggle who's up, who's not, who got put back, who got skipped over, that kind of thing. Under the ordinance you have in front of you, it cleans up a lot of language throughout there, but also it's going to limit the number of slots available on the rotation on a per company basis. Now, companies are not simple to define because several of our wrecker companies are owned by the same people. We have 11 separate companies that technically are only six companies because each of the companies or association companies have the same phone number, same dispatcher, same owners, same impound lot, et cetera, et cetera. So our proposal is, is that under the new requirements or the new guidelines of defining what an association of businesses are or a business is, that we limit that to our current number of companies who meet the qualifications that are currently here in September are permitted. They can get a new permit, however, if there are an association of companies under the new guidelines, they will have to share one slot on the rotation list. The rotation list would go from over 10, I think it's 11 or 12 currently, down to six, with nine of the companies sharing four of those slots because they're all have the same owner, same phone number, et cetera, et cetera. So what we're hoping that will do is streamline our process, obviously, because it's less for dispatch to keep up with and try to determine who goes where when. But more importantly, hopefully, when that number gets called, they're going to dispatch whichever wrecker is actually closest so that our officers aren't wasting their time waiting on a wrecker to show up. They do have 30 minutes to show up. If they don't show up in that 30 minutes, then we'll call the next one on rotation. And here recently, some of them have been pushing that 30-minute mark. So that's where we are tonight. If you have any questions about the ordinance, I'd be more than happy to answer. If I can't, I will pass it on to Corporal Clear, who's excited to be here tonight, by the way. I told him that tens of people are watching and they were all looking at him, so. But overall, I think this would be a good move for the department at this point in time because literally, there's no limit. And if I accept one, I have to accept all.
I'm a big fan of anything that gets the, you know, the vehicle off the road faster because as somebody who's had to sit and wait on the highway for a long time, it, you know, especially with the traffic, we're already down to, you know, single lanes, you know, that, that, that only gets the road open quicker.
Traffic is going to get worse.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm a fan.
So is the new ordinance requiring the company to be, to have a storage lot themselves?
No.
Locally?
They can share, but all store lots have to be within the city limits.
Okay.
There are currently six within the city limits. Now, if the number ever falls below five on our list, we'll, we will start taking applications again, but we'll never know, go beyond five because we're letting the current companies stay on the road to stay if they want to re-permit. That's why we're going to six. After it falls below that number, the most we'll ever have on the rotation is five. No matter how many wreckers are permitted by each company, I mean, each of five on the rotation could have.
They have one spot in the rotation and they can rotate amongst themselves, but they only get one spot in the rotation.
Exactly.
Okay. So for all of them to get work, the rotation has to go through five times?
Yes.
Got you.
So... Clear, you're doing a great job answering all these questions.
I, I heard you had aerial footage of the storage lots from your drone and all that stuff, no? Mayor, move to approve Ordinance 25Z, amending Chapter 26, records of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alvin, Texas, providing for severability, providing for a penalty, providing for publication, providing for an effective date, and setting for other matters related thereto.
Second. Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, Council, I want to thank you and I want to take a second to embarrass Corporal Clear a bit more. It was his first time being voluntold to write a ordinance and he did a really, really, really good job. He worked closely with our city attorney and pretty much his first draft made it through, so.
All right. Can you do a few more then? We're going to...
So we're going to give him more, yes.
By the way, when I did a ride-along last year with Sergeant Vincent, I was in the car with Sergeant Vincent and he got a call on the radio from Corporal Clear in regards to a fleet. And to it, to his defense, it was his first fleet involving another vehicle. He used that key word, involving another vehicle. So there's others, but the look on his face was priceless when he realized I was in the driver's seat. Not in the driver's seat, in the front seat, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. That's good stuff. Corporal Clear, thank you for your hard work. Thank you. All right. Item C, discussion regarding a request from R. West Development to de-annex 3.14 acres along the north side of West Highway 6 between County Road 146 and County Road 147 for the development of a single-family residential subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello, Michelle.
So this has been put on the agenda at the request of the developer, which is R. West Development. Justin Barnett is here representing the development firm. They're also the developers that did Martha's Vineyard out in the ETJ and provided for MUD 24, which is the current ETJ mud that serves Martha's Vineyard. So what they're asking is, currently they have 50 acres, 3.14 acres of that is inside the city limits right now. They're wanting to do a single-family subdivision and so approximately 19 of the 196 lots that they're proposing would be in the city under this configuration now. The only problem is, is we don't have wastewater service to serve the whole development nor the 19 lots. As you saw in your agenda packets, the development company, through our consultant, Freeza Nichols, did a wastewater improvement study to see what would need to be done to our system in order for us to provide for their total development, as well as to provide for other future development that could happen along the corridor. So in order to do that, it would take doing two projects that are currently on our 20-year CIP. And those would be Phases 1 and 2 of the Highway 6 lift station consolidation projects. Those were in the 2022 water wastewater master plan update that you all saw. So currently on that plan, those two projects are slated to be complete in 2027 and 2032 at the earliest. That would be if you handed us the money today to be able to start design and work through the projects. Another thing that has to happen is lift station 23 has to be complete. We just started that 18-month project. We're about two months in on it. So that would have to be complete along with these two projects to be able to serve their development. So at that, we're looking at seven years at the earliest. Lift station consolidation on Highway 6 is not currently funded in any of the future bond projects. That would be something that would need to be funded. The total cost for those projects is about 12.6 million. 1.8 million of that would be contributable to just this proposed development. So they're looking and their request is going to be to de-annex the 3.14 acres and those 19 new lots that they want to put on the ground and so that they can serve that whole development could be served by MUD 24. And they're planning, and they have, I believe, a permit approved through TCEQ to have a lift sta, or not a lift station, a wastewater treatment plant built along the south side of Highway 6, which I believe in your packet, you also have a map that shows that location. So if there's not any question, or if you have any questions of Justin, he's here to answer that about the development, or if you have questions of me, I'd be happy to answer.
What happens if we don't?
It's the same thing we've been dealing with.
Um...
Well, what if you don't de-annex? What, what do they do?
Well...
They don't build those 19 houses?
Right.
Hold on. All right. Well, go ahead.
Good evening. I, you know, we've been doing Martha's Vineyard, I broke, you know, when I broke ground with the City of Alvin, we built a great relationship with the staff of City of Alvin. We don't want to approach that like this. We considered, we, we came up with $16,000 to do the study to see if we could partner with the city and upgrade the facilities and hold off. When I thought it would be like 1.8 million, you know, we could contribute that towards the upgrade, but we can't. I unfortunately can't come up with 12 million to, to fund that for, even if we, you pay me back in the future. So we, I am a resident of Martha's Vineyard. When I drive out of my subdivision, I, I look for shopping and consumption of consumer. I have to turn right, right now. And that kills me because I came in, built Martha's Vineyard, believed in Martha's Vineyard, lived and bought in Martha's Vineyard. I'm a resident of Alvin. I have always hoped that one day that I would say that my house is in city limits of Alvin. When MUD 24 was set up, it was set up with the express idea that if the city ever wanted to annex any of MUD 24, it had, it didn't even, it's already approved in the creation documents. So that's how we have always approached this. Could we live without the 19 lots? Well, that's 1.7 million in revenue. The wastewater treatment facility is 3 million of that cost. So making the numbers work have been hard to just, just to say, well, can we just live without those 19 lots? It would help us, this development would help us build that wastewater treatment facility. It would certainly allow us to seek development along Highway 6 in the interim of the city being able to provide utilities. That's, that's, I don't want to approach this like, well, if you don't, then we'll go this route. I don't even, I didn't even want, because we have a great working relationship. So how do we make this work? I want to make whatever, listen, I love kind of the, the engineering, Michelle, Shanna, they've always been great. We've sat down, we've had great conversations. Want to continue doing that. Allowing us, Martha's Vineyard was tough because we had too many, we had to go two miles for off-site services to get, we had to run two miles to get the services to the city. We have a, we, we do have utilities through the service, the cities serving Martha's Vineyard. There's an idea in my head that somehow if we built this wastewater treatment plant, we could divert Martha's Vineyard into that and serve and allow development along Highway 6. I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but that's just, that's the way I think. I'm a problem solver and, and so that's why I'm coming. I need the 196 lots to make the pro forma work. You guys are business people, that's, I need 196 lots to make this work. I can't, I can't go, I, I can't just do it without the 19. So we have purposely carved out the 19, that's what our request was, I, to come and have a discussion before we presented it. This is just for discussion. It is to keep a continuous piece of land in the city because we have hopes to go on down between Martha's Vineyard and here and develop out. Purchase the land, develop it, put rooftops, but put commercial. I would love to turn left out of Martha's Vineyard and go look for my shopping, my eateries, the restaurant, and all of that. And, and we're getting there. It's get, I, seven years ago, it's, it's a lot better. Leadership has, you guys are great. You have stood up, you, you know, Mayor, you were a council member when I first came with Martha's Vineyard Platte. So leadership has stepped up. I like where the city's going. I'm proud to say that I, I, I'm a developer and businessman in the City of Alvin. I have developed an apartment in City of Houston. We have developed a subdivision in Manville and Pearland. You guys are the best. So I'm not coming here to say, do this or else. I know I have, I, I, I keep up with, I'm a landowner and I'm a developer, so I keep up with what that, I don't want to sit here and say that. So if you guys don't want that, then we regroup and figure out how to make it work or, you know, and come back, so.
I, I didn't mean it to be combative. I was just genuinely curious, why would it matter if some of it's in the city limits?
Like you, we have muds, you know, people serve muds when they, we don't have service. Is it that we have to give people the city service?
Yes, if they're inside the city limits.
A mud can't service?
Well, and that particular mud, because it's an ETJ mud, so they either have to be in-city muds or ETJ muds. And it's not, I mean, three point one four acres would not be big enough to do an in-city mud.
Yeah, that was the clarification I was getting, because to me, I just thought, yeah, why not just leave it in the city?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, why couldn't it be in your city mud, so, or a combination thereof? The, I, well, the way I look at things and I approach things and, and, and on this, where, where the water line, and I know that, that the services were extended from Martha's Vineyard, and it's always baffled me for, for years and years and years as to why we put services going down Highway six to service one neighborhood. And then I've had multiple businesses and land developers that, that are up and down Highway six going, this sucks. One, I mean, you put a water line in and it only serviced one neighborhood and, and it went to there. So I look at things as, on a business standpoint, is that if a business owner came to me and I was a financer and said, and I was looking at the, at their business and said, hey, why you keep downsizing? And over the past two to three years, Alvin keeps downsizing, we keep getting de-annex, 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 and somebody's going to look at it and say, hey, if we need to invest in Alvin, we want to bring a corporation, we want to bring our franchises to Alvin, why are we downsizing? So I look at that on a business side of things. But then again, if, if this is a discussion and what we're looking at is nineteen lots, why couldn't there just be a developer agreement as to we keep those nineteen lots? And eventually, once that mud and we are able to actually take it over, have the services and stuff like that, then it's a no-brainer that it just comes into the city. And then, but we make some type of an agreement that it, it technically doesn't fall under a partially an intercity mud versus a ETJ mud. It's just basically we made a developer agreement with the developer that basically there's nineteen lots that you need that are still in the city, but we're not going to do anything with or not touch, touch it and stuff. So basically, it's both, it's a give and take. We're working on it, we're doing stuff. Because I can tell you right now, if it comes down to emergency services, you're going to get fire and EMS. And there's no way, and heck, I know that the police department is going to say, hey, the sheriff's department needs help over here in this area, that they're not going to go down that, down that road. So we all have to work together, we all have to play together, and definitely with our, to answer your question about you turning left instead of right, turn left, because yeah, we are the best, but we are better than those other best ones out there with the five twenty-eight extension and a whole bunch of stuff. So if I'm selling it and you're hearing it, I want to see certain things. This is what I've preached so much to this council over the past couple of years, is that we should be growing and we should be competitive with the other stuff, and how can we make things better for you? So we want to hear from you. How can we do this and how can we make this work? Because we don't want to lose the land. But we want to make it better for quality of life for the people that are going to be in this area because we're going to consider them Alvin residents, whether they're inside the city or not.
I have a question. What lot sizes are you planning on putting out there?
Well, right now, we would do a PD, we would do a planned development on this and do sixty foot, I think that's where we.
Sixty by one twenty?
Sixty by one twenty.
Okay. So is there not a way we can incorporate the whole development into an ETJ mud? And still, or, or a city, a city limit mud, I'm sorry, and for future, future annex?
Well, we looked at the intercity muds, and we would still, we would either have to annex everything into the city and create an intercity mud. That's expensive and time-consuming. It's very expensive, and it's not typically seen as favorable with the city.
Okay.
When we, it, it is a long-runout process that we shy away from. It's just, it's, it's not, it's not feasible in that. We're not. I don't want to, that's why I wanted to come talk. I don't want to take land away from the city. I just got to make sure we can service those lots. I need the taxable value on those lots to get reimbursements for the wastewater treatment plant. That's the, that's the basis of all of that. I, I would love to see that we get to a place where, when everything's upgraded, that the city consumes and assumes MUD twenty-four and takes the land back and puts it. Let us develop it out and get it worthy. Just to show you that when we annexed Martha's Vineyard commercial piece, we gave the, the city special annexation for sales tax collection. Am I, yeah, so that, that was, we want to see that in city limits and consumed by city limits. I, I, I'm not, I'm not just telling you that. I need those nineteen lots in MUD twenty-four. I, I, I don't think it would be cost-effective to create a mud in this point. Probably take two and a half years at best to, to create an intercity mud.
You're a young guy, you can wait, right? I'm just messing with you.
Yes, if I didn't have to pay proper taxes, I would say, yes.
I get that. My next question, is this some, Suzanne, is this similar to what we've been dealing with, with the annexation? To where if we vote, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying. No.
The new state law that passed.
That's not this.
That's not this?
That's not this. So what would happen if, if ultimately we, we don't have a meeting of the minds, which we're not, whoops, excuse me, we're not, I don't think we're close to that yet. But they would file a petition for de-annexation, there's certain timelines. The only recourse that a city has at that point when receiving a petition for de-annexation for failure to provide municipal services is to provide municipal services. So what, I'm, I'm just pulling it up now. So I don't like the chat GPT answers, so, or the, the AI answers, because the AI answer says that they can with city consent, an ETJ mud can, but I don't know. It's worth definitely, it's worth definitely looking into as far as that. I've never, I don't think we've had a situation.
No, it's usually like our other in-city mud, the only other, well, no, we have more than that. Kendall Lakes, for example, utilities were there, the capacity was there, all we had to do was tie on and, and build their normal inside their subdivision, water and sewer lines. This is different because we don't have the lines out there nor the capacity right now without doing those projects. The only thing, Martha's Vineyard, well, MUD twenty-four is done, it's an ETJ mud. They would just be tacking on to that mud, going about their business. But there's also, you're capped at a dollar fifty per one hundred dollar valuation. And so you've got to, if the property's inside the city, they're going to be paying city tax on those nineteen lots, so that lowers the amount that they can charge on that mud tax. So that in turn lowers the amount in order to be able to build their own plant to serve the services that we should be providing if they're in the city. So I don't know if you can make an agreement on something like that, where you could say, we want to keep you in the city, we're not going to de-annex you, but maybe there's some kind of, you know, I don't know.
That's what I'm getting.
A payment on the taxes or something.
That's what I'm getting at, is if there's some type of an agreement where we have an intercity mud, you have an intercity mud, but there's a tax, there's a different tax rate for intercity muds versus, versus city, city proper.
Can't we just move to the builder's agreement that on X date, we annex them? Because that would give us time, we could say ten years from now.
We give you the lots, and you turn around and give them back to us after X amount of years?
Yeah.
And we, and we honor our commitment.
I don't mind exploring that at all. I, I know we ran this through the mud attorneys and it's this, we, we shifted and moved, because here was the deal, we were going to do, our original thought was let's just do an interlocal, you keep them, we'll do an interlocal agreement. But the mud attorney said it cannot happen that way. There is something legally structured that it cannot happen that way, so.
We could just make a gentleman's agreement and just.
Yeah, Austin does it all the time.
So the point being is, is that, you know, I, I, I knew that this is a sensitive subject, and we're not coming and saying, give me or else. I want to try to work it out, but I'm telling you with my heartfelt what it costs in the, the water, wastewater, if I didn't have to do the wastewater treatment plant, this wouldn't be an issue. But to do the wastewater treatment plant, it's about three and a half million dollars capital outlay upfront. And so we get to a break even on the point on the lots with, with a hundred and ninety lots, I think it was. And so that was when we drew, we, we kept all of this in there so that we could say that this is in city limits and we're touching city limits. Because when we go west, we're trying to think, to go out west towards Martha's Vineyard, we would say, this is city limits and this is a subdivision and keep it where, where the commercial is in city limits. That's our goal. We, we said in planning and pre-development, said, if we do anything else, Highway six and commercial is set aside for the city. And we really didn't create this, but for us to get going and go west, I need a wastewater treatment plant. The three and a half million dollar price tag, I just have to, I have to break even until the mud reimbursements come in.
Gotcha.
So that's, that's, so that's my request. I, if, this was just for discussion, it was just to say, hey, I didn't want to tie this up into a long petition for annexation, and you guys get this on decision day. And that was originally had said, hey, let, let, let's float this up to city council and see what the, the view is. If there was a way to do it, we'll, 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 we'll go that route. But I've heard from all the attorneys and all of the backend, and I just don't see the way that we're going to be able to do it and keep it within the legal confines. I love to make gentleman's agreements. These people over here do not like it at all. I can tell you, Suzanne, you were honest with the, the service, utility services agreement and the rewrites and the, so. But I just want you to know my heart, that we're here, and I'm just asking, so.
Well, so if I can summarize, you, we, the current mud can't be in city and ETJ. So you'd have to get a new mud, which might take a couple of years, and we really don't like intercity. And you need, you need to be servicing those other lots to make the numbers work to build it anyway, so that makes the most sense.
With that built, here's the one thing, with that built, the city could come to us and go, MUD twenty-four, would you, if we can agree, would you guys take the processing of Martha's Vineyard wastewater that would allow, just counseling dealer on to your point, that might allow for capacity along Highway six where the, their stuff's there? There's a possibility. We're thinking ahead because we're problem-solving for something that we don't even know that might exist. But I know that for the lift station and the capacity along Highway six, we used it, and I get that. And if we could bolster MUD twenty-four, get the, get the utilities serviced through MUD twenty-four, then there's a possibility for us to do something that would benefit the city in that sense. It's kind of a trade-off, and that's the way I saw it coming in, is how can we help and how can we work together? I will say, and the numbers are tight on, on profitability. And, and, but to get that wastewater treatment is huge for, say, there's another, there's another two hundred acres or another hundred acres. And, and we have a target that there's another hundred acres that's not in city limits that would go into MUD twenty-four and help bolster that and bring residents. What we want to do along Highway six is commercial development.
Yeah.
What we want to do in the grasslands, suburbs, so.
I don't think any of us, I don't want to speak for you, I don't think any of us are keen to giving away land, but for a developer like himself, who's already developing Alvin, easy to work with from what I hear, invested in Alvin. My take is nineteen lots is, which we're not going to do anything with any, anytime soon anyway, so.
Well, MUD twenty-four already has the stipulation that we can annex them at any time, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
We could just re-annex them.
So if, if the city were to, if council were to agree to de-annex, the rule is that you can't then go back and try to annex within ten years, but it could be that.
Requested by the mud.
But if it's, that's what I'm saying, like, we couldn't just, well, now we can't really annex anything. But it, but I don't even think with the, I don't even think that it can be annexed back into the city on, when it's been de-annexed. But even so, when you're talking ten years, if you're talking about the other improvements that are already there, we're at seven with those, it, you know, it might be in such a way that the agreement says, okay, at such time, after that ten years has passed, like, simply because, so the de-annexation is, is different than like releasing from the ETJ, because there's no process now to get that back. But there is a process to get back into city. I mean, anyway, so it is possible that at some point, when all of those things are in alignment, that, that it could be brought back into the city, especially if Martha's Vineyard goes that way, especially depending on the rest of the development along Highway six.
So can we put that in the developer's agreement? Yeah, that would be in the MUD, MUD twenty-four agreement and stuff, and it'd be in an agreement. But, but just to make sure I got my numbers and, and stuff, because I'm going to do a little bit of work, homework also. I like doing this. I like funding money, right, Unruh? I found money. He woke up. The, it was three point, three point five million for your, your area, but ultimately going down Highway six, we're looking at plus or minus twelve, twelve point five, twelve, five million over the next five years. Something like.
Now, how long it would take to.
Well, we got to get things funded. Right. That's why I'm getting at about five years, and then a, then a project about the seven completion in about ten, ten years, and then work on all this, because what's the other, there's another slide up there, past this one that shows some other green areas, that stuff? What is that other green areas?
Those are our targeted developments. And all, everything on the south side's commercial. There's a, there's a commercial tent. That on the north side for lift station forty, that's our four, that's our fifty acres.
Gotcha.
So everything in the green on the south side, everything but our fifty acres in green is intended to develop commercial.
Yeah, that's prime commercial because of the railroad tracks and major corridor and stuff. I got you. But those are future things that we got to take into consideration. Go ahead, Council. That's the city limit sign. Where, where exactly is the parcel there? Like I see the, the, the lots traced out, is that it? Where just the lots are traced out?
Chief, you want some more, chief?
See, the red line is just the lots, right? So that's the only part that's getting, so outside of that is still going to remain city limits? Okay. Right. Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll do some homework. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Stand up for the next one, Michelle?
Yes, sir, I have next two.
All right, item, item D, consider an award of bid to Tandem Services LLC for the twenty-twenty-four concrete pavement and drainage project for Hood Street in an amount not to exceed eight million eighty-five thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract upon legal review.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, what you have before you is the bid award for Hood Street. It's taken a little while to do design, a little bit more challenging than we thought, but we feel that the bid numbers came back well. The contractor, Tandem Services, they've done projects for us before and have a, have done a good job. We had a total of three bidders on the project, and they were the, the low-end qualified bidder for it. Basically, the project is a total redo of Hood Street, sidewalks, water and sewer, improvements on the storm sewer system that's there now, road replaced all the way from Sealy Street to South Street. So it's about a five hundred and forty calendar day project, so it's going to be some, probably some inconveniences along the way, but it's a valuable project to the city. Any questions?
Just like before, this is what we discussed when we initially started this whole entire project. This is just a major road that if something happens to Gordon Street, like right now, what's going on, this is our, our road that's a bypass and a, and a connector for our residents and stuff to use, so.
When would this project start?
Most likely next month. Contractor's ready to go.
Gordon Street.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to award a bid to Tandem Services LLC for the twenty-twenty-four concrete pavement and drainage project for Hood Street in an amount not to exceed eight million eighty-five thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract upon legal review.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item E, consider an agreement from PACS Construction Laboratories and Testing Services LLC in an amount not to exceed one hundred and two thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars for materials testing services for the twenty-twenty-four concrete pavement and drainage project Hood Street, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review.
Thank you, Mayor. This contract, it will do all the, provide for PACS to do all the materials testing on that Hood Street project that you just approved. Normally, we always do materials testing, it's just this project is a higher dollar value, and therefore, these services are a higher dollar value and requires council approval.
Questions, comments?
Mayor, move to approve an agreement with PACS Construction Laboratories and Testing Services LLC in an amount not to exceed one hundred and two thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars for materials testing services.
seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for materials testing services for the twenty twenty-four concrete pavement and drainage project Hood Street and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement upon legal review.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, item F, consider the proposed collective bargaining labor agreement between the city of Alvin, Texas and the Alvin Police Officers Association.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, uh, the city began negotiations with the Alvin Police Officers Association back in February. Um, concluded those nega, negotiations in July and have the contract that is before you this evening. Um, the terms of that contract have been agreed to by staff and by the association. And we ask that you, um, approve the agreement tonight. Um, I think Justin Kelly, the president of the association, is here this evening. Um, and I'm also here if you have any questions.
Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve the collective bargaining labor agreement between the city of Alvin, Texas and the Alvin Police Officers Association, the APOA.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, consider if any requests from individual council members for future meetings. Councilman Garvey?
No, Mayor.
Vela?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to, um, have a, a quick workshop, um, here, um.
Denied. Vaughn?
I would also like a workshop.
Sure. No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, one of the things is, um, that I've, uh, taken a couple of, um, with certain boards that I'm, I'm a part of, um, is on the, um, things that have come up is on a, um, I just lost my train of thought on the, the actual wording, but it, it has to deal with, uh, budget and, um, um, the, uh, finance having a, uh, council having a policy on, uh, budget and the, um, the reserve contingency fund and a policy not, uh, not to, uh, go below and stuff. So, uh, several cities are, are working on policies on, and stuff to, to protect, um, themselves. And I've came in possession of a couple of those, uh, policies and stuff, and I'd like to work on that with council as well as our finance department to make sure that we put something, uh, together with us, uh, for, for us to have as a tool, as well as staff to have as a tool and a part of that. One of the things that just came up is what we voted on today, and this is, has no relevance or a part of it, but this is, it could be used as an example, is the collective bargaining agreement. If there was some kind of issue with a collective bargaining agreement, um, we had already passed the tax rate as well as the budget, and then we would have to reverse the whole entire process and stuff. So these are the type of things that have come up in other boards and associations that I'd like to, um, council to consider.
Okay. We'll get you on the calendar. Thank you. Vaughn, anything?
I'd also like a workshop.
For?
Uh, food trucks. I think I, I had spoken to Unruh about this, about placement of them and where they are operating and everything, and I'd like to have another workshop on it. It's been five years since our last one, I think.
Okay. Very good. No?
No, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, reports from the city manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, an open, open house for the comprehensive master plan will be held on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth from six to eight PM at the Alvin Fire EMS station. Uh, this is an opportunity to, uh, review the summary of the plan before it goes into its final phase. Um, also with that, on Tuesday, October the twenty-first at six PM, uh, the city council and the planning commission will have a joint workshop to review the, uh, the comp plan as well. Uh, Fire EMS open house is scheduled for October fourth from ten AM to two PM at the Fire EMS station. National Night Out is October seventh. For those interested in hosting an event, contact Detective Justin Kelly at the Alvin Police Department. And lastly, October thirty-first is our annual trick or treat trail at the National Oak Park from six thirty to eight thirty PM. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, now we'll move on to, uh, items of community interest. Councilmember Davis, we'll start with you.
I was just looking it up. Um, it is the Hispanic Heritage Fiesta. It is this Saturday at, at ten AM. Thank you, at the museum.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll be there. Hope to see y'all there. It's fun and they have a lot more vendors this year out here and a dancing horse. So that'll be entertaining. A single horse, I believe. But one's good enough.
Mayor, I'd like, uh, to thank the Alvin Volunteer Fire Department. A couple of weeks ago, I had a, uh, my father-in-law's house caught fire. Luckily, he wasn't home. And we were the first ones to arrive on the scene. And the, uh, chief was already there, a couple of, uh, Missouri County sheriffs were there as well as two, uh, firemen that lived close by. And, uh, you know, I, I know our fire department is really good and I know they, they do a good job, but you know, Whitney, Whitney, uh, Whitney, witnessing it firsthand is a completely different experience. So, you know, they're efficient, they're exact, and they're really compassionate. And I just wanted to give kudos to these guys for, you know, unfortunately, uh, we had to experience that, but they made it as, as good as it could have possibly have been in that situation as well as, as, as far Marshall Vela, he was also there. So I just want to extend my gratitude. And also, uh, Fireman, uh, Donaldin, Billy Donaldin, was on the scene when we showed up and he had heard that my in-laws' dogs were trapped in the house. So that man went into the house three separate times to save their dogs before the fire trucks even showed up. So, you know, they're just completely, you know, they're indebted to him, very grateful for it. And, you know, it's like their baby. So really, really appreciate, uh, our fire department. I just wanted to say thank you, guys.
Good stuff. Thank you.
No, sir.
I had something, but I can't follow that, so never mind.
All right. Well, in that case, uh, the time is eight oh one and we are adjourned. Thank.